All right, I'm gonna call this meeting of the Kerrville City Council, December 10, 2024, meeting to order. You might notice that Councilmember Hughes is absent this evening. She hurt her foot, and hopefully she'll be back next month. So I will lead the pledge of allegiance and give the invocation. Let us pray. Lord, thank you for this town that you let us live in. Thank you for the men and women of the city of Kerrville staff who make sure every day our water runs and our streets are safe, the police who protect us, and the firemen who put out our fires, and everybody else, from finance to libraries to, well, everyone. Thank you for all the men and women who work so hard to make the city of Kerrville work. Thank you for the season, the season of happiness and joy. Thank you for a community that celebrates together. Watch over Brenda Hughes and heal her quickly. And one last thing to be thankful for, thankful for the laughter of children in the city council chambers. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance.
To the states of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
One person, announcements, Stewart.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to say hello to everybody tonight. We got a big, big room, a lot of people here. I do want to single out the ROTC here from Tybee. How many pushups do y'all do when Tybee scores? Because they had, they had one game this year where they scored 74 points, and I think that's pretty busy then. All right, well, we welcome everybody. I just have one announcement tonight, Mayor, and that's good for our people who like to fish. Texas Parks and Wildlife Department will conduct two stockings of Louise Hayes Park with rainbow trout, and the first release is next Tuesday. Yeah, and that's, I think, what, we never know what time they're gonna get here, so you just have to kind of hang out by the edge of the river and wait. But it's definitely worth it. They stock it with 1,200 rainbow trout, and then they will be back on Wednesday, January 15th, to stock it with another 1,200 rainbow trout. So it's a lot of fun. You do need to have a freshwater fishing license if you're over 17, but we encourage everybody to come on out. That's always a good time, and you'll have some good eating that night, great, great fish. And that's it for me.
Thank you. I have fond memories of putting all children to catch trout, and, boy, they caught a lot of trout, so I hope people will join in. Any other announcements?
I was gonna have a gift wrap on the third floor of the parking garage, a free gift wrap, another promotion for using the garage, which is for the protection of your car and your safety and ease of walkability, but instead I'm going to the Reese Across America, and I encourage everyone to do that on Spur 100 at 11 o'clock on Saturday.
It is a very meaningful event, too. I've got one that's coming up on Sunday. It's, River Hill is doing a Blue Santa golf tournament, and they reached out and said, hey, can you help us put this together kind of last minute? Blue Santa, I don't know if anybody's ever participated in it, but the Rotary Club's buying 51 meals for families in town, and Blue Santa, through Chief McCall and the Citizens' Police Academy, are buying gifts for 152 less fortunate young people, citizens of Kerrville. And what River Hill's looking for is, they want 100 players at $100 apiece, so that's $10,000, and they're gonna turn around and write a check to Blue Santa for $7,500. And that includes dinner or lunch and prizes and all kind of stuff on this Sunday, the 15th. So if anybody's interested, River Hill's the place to be Sunday after church, so thank you.
Of course. All right. Our next is presentations, and we'll start with honoring John Ruth. John, would you like to come down front?
How are you? Well, thank you, Joe.
Charlie.
I'm a former student. I'd probably stay quiet in the library. That I can rely on his name. That's true.
Okay. Delane, can you tell us the story? Or would you, John, would you prefer to tell us the story about the stained glass?
Well, yeah. In 1983, a young woman who was a junior at that time, in the late spring of 83, came to me and said, I think you know that my mother is a stained glass artist, but so am I, and I'd like to design a stained glass window to go behind the clear glass window that separated the library from the hallway. She wanted the clear glass to be protection. And I listened to her. I knew her, and I knew she was an artist, but this seemed like something that couldn't happen. And then she pulled out this sketch pad where she had sketched the library from the vantage point, looking into the hall, and then with layers of onion skin, she showed me the colors. It was so amazing, I said, stay here. And she told me it would cost $2,500, and she didn't have the money for the materials. She's gonna donate her talents, but she also needed a place to work. So I went down, Bob Presti was our principal then, and I took the book with me, and I said, look at this. And he said, let me make some calls. And so he started ball rolling, I guess, because the next morning, I had $2,500 in the library account in a special little place, and I was to pay the bills that she brought. And they gave her an empty science lab to work in. And she started late April of 83, it was hot, no air conditioning. She would change her clothes, go to the science, her lab, and start working until the custodians closed the building. And I don't know how many panels make up the window, but they were on this side. And so she worked all summer long, and as the panels were completed, she'd bring them over, and we stored them in the library. And it was assembled with the help of some scaffolding from Thad Ziegler and a man to hold the panels in place while she did the screws and everything. And it was completed about two weeks before the 83-84 school year began, her senior year, and she got to spend her senior year seeing this window that she had created. And at the end of the year, there was a awards assembly, the school district paper, a beautiful plaque thanking her for this, and I got presented to it.
As it should be.
And the stained glass is preserved. It's now at the Hal Peterson Middle School.
Right. It started off at the high school, and then when the high school, the old high school, became Peterson. How many years were y'all there in?
Nine or six.
Anyway, when the new Peterson was built, I was wondering what was gonna happen, because it had been announced that the building would be destroyed. And so that's how this happened.
Well, you started it, and so you deserve a lot of credit.
And the school administration supported it.
They did.
Dr. Rico, they supported it at the beginning, and they supported moving it to the new site.
And didn't you say at the reopening we just had, it was the fastest, smoothest board meeting that you'd ever been in?
Well, I guess it was. I don't know if it was a meeting, but, you know, from about 4:30 in the afternoon till about 7:30 the next morning, it had happened.
It got to the side.
Yeah, we got the money.
It can be done.
We do have an award, and I would like to read the text for you, okay? Please. So you know that I learned how to read. The city of Kerrville recognizes John Ruth on the December 10, 2024 Kerrville Kindness Award. John Ruth's dedication to the arts was evident during his long career as a librarian at Tybee High School, but his ability to inspire others recently paid dividends again through the artistic work of one of his former students. In 1983, John was able to secure $2,500 from the school, KISD school board, to finance a stained glass mural by Tybee student Masha Rukina. The finished mural took up an entire wall at Tybee and later Hal Peterson Middle School from 1983 to 2021, when the building was demolished. However, the mural was recently reinstalled at the new Peterson Middle School, where it once again, can once again be enjoyed by current and future generations of Kerrville students. Masha passed away in her mid-20s, but because of the efforts of John Ruth, her artwork will continue to serve as an inspiration for other budding young artists. Congratulations.
The least important part of this, but I thought.
I know. One, two, and three, and we'll do one more. Thank you.
Thank you again, John.
Thank you very much.
Go see it. It's in the library.
Yes, go see it.
Congratulations. All right. We have another group to recognize that, the JROTC, and I'm gonna have some help from Councilman Jeff Harris. Mr. Harris, if you're with the JROTC, please come up. And just form a line down this way, okay? You're doing great. There we go. You have to come to, please. What I'm gonna do is I'm gonna read the award, okay? And then, first, I'm gonna ask Jeff to talk about this, and then I'm gonna read the award, and then I'm gonna go down and ask you to give us your name and what grade you're in. Anything you'd like to say about JROTC, okay? Jeff?
Thank you, sir. Didn't know I was gonna get to talk about y'all, but I'm very happy I do. Anytime we have an ask for color guard, we all know we have a lot of veterans in the area, ROTC is always the first one to step up and say, absolutely, we'll be there for you. Well, we had a Veterans Day breakfast right at Veterans Day this year. They couldn't come. We didn't have a color guard this year, because they were in Johnson City representing ROTC, JROTC, and Tybee, and forty miles away. So it's just not Kerrville and our area that they support, so they reach out. But, you know, we're very fortunate to have a JROTC program with us. We're fixing to lose a leader because he's gonna quit, I mean, retire, again. And Mike, I don't wanna say too much, but Chief, I'm really glad you're back with us, and you're upright and healthy, so thanks, be to God for that, and prayers are answered. So, anyway, as, I won't go there. We'll leave that alone, so, anyway. But thank y'all so much. It was, they ask council members every month or every meeting, hey, we need ideas, we need somebody to, so it was a no-brainer to get y'all here. And it worked out for the betterment, because we were gonna try to have y'all here at Veterans Day, but it worked out great for tonight, because Chief could be here with us. So thank y'all.
Okay. Give us your name and what grade you're in, and also something about JROTC.
Yes, sir. So my name is Chase. I'm currently a senior at Tybee High School. A little bit about ROTC, those past, these past four years for me, ROTC has helped me grow as a person. It's taught me a lot of leadership skills, and it's just kind of changed me in ways that, you know, I don't think any other organization or anything else in this world that could. It's taught me a lot about how to be a good leader and, yeah, just be a person of honor.
Aren't you fixing to do something when you graduate? Aren't you going in the United States Marine Corps?
Yes, sir.
My name's Logan. I'm a senior, and one thing I will say is that we love volunteering, and it's very fun. The instructors make it very fun for us to volunteer, and we love it.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
My name's Ryland, and I'm a freshman. I think ROTC is a good learning experience, and it's very fun to go to all the events and just do things.
Next.
My name is Cameron. I'm currently a senior. I will say one thing about ROTC that I love is the family that you make, your entire core. It's just a family. You come up with these people, you hate seeing the people leave, the seniors that are leaving, but you also just enjoy seeing those people that are coming in, you enjoy seeing them grow. It's great for leadership, and just, it's a great life experience all around.
Thank you.
I'm Tyler, and I am a junior this year at ROTC, and one thing I would have to say about ROTC is a bit of repeating of what everybody else has said, but the relationships that you get to form, the bonds you get to just make with other people is something that you couldn't make in another program, so it's very fun.
Next.
Name's David. I'm a junior. Little thing about ROTC I love is being able to serve my community, the honor and the privilege in that, and being able to do color guards and just representing this beautiful community.
Sir? Would you like to say something, please?
It's been, it's been great. You know, they, they all came out for me, and every single one of them has a golden heart about what they feel about, and I feel it. Love them.
Sir?
And we will tell you it's a family operation, so these are good kids coming from good families, and we're just continuing to promote the values of the community pouring into these kids that have learned how to take care of each other, and that's probably one of the best things that we could ever teach them, is how to look out for one another, help one another, and by doing that, they also take care of their community. So we're proud of these kids and all they've accomplished, and as you can see, we have freshmen all the way to seniors, so they're always training the next group, so we're always training our replacements, and that's what we teach them.
Let me read the award real quick. The city of Kerrville recognizes Tybee High School's Air Force Junior ROTC Program with the December 10, 2024 Kerrville Kindness Award. Tybee High School's Air Force Junior Reserve Officers Training Corps, AFJROTC, program is a leadership and development program that provides Tybee students with an opportunity to be leaders, persons of good characters, and productive citizens. Students learn the USAF core values of integrity first, service before self, and excellence in all we do. Tybee's ROTC cadets help feed veterans during Veterans Day and Thanksgiving events, perform all color guard requirements at at home football games and parades, as well as KISD board meetings, visit the Early Childhood Center during Veterans Week to help teach flag folding for three and four-year-olds. I hope y'all have filmed of that. And provide escort duties to official visitors to the, to Tybee for events like Career Day and CTE workshops. The Kerrville Kindness Program offers a sincere thank you to the Tybee High School Air Force Junior ROTC for their dedication to service, and it was signed by every member of the council. So what we're gonna do is we're gonna take a picture. Could you hold that up wherever they can see it? The camera people over here? There we go. Everybody left this way. There we go. All right. One, two, and three, and must be one more. One, two, and three. Thank you, guys.
Thank you for all you do. Thank you for being here. Lucky for the future.
I had to have it pulled in.
All right. We have a Christmas event. Would you mind coming up here with me? This shy young woman has written a poem that won our Christmas poetry contest, and while I have a proclamation here, I think everybody would prefer to hear the poems first. Are you ready?
Sure. Can I use a poem?
Of course you can.
What's your name?
Her name is Katie Caple. I'm sorry.
With kudos to Mr. Seuss. There's no snow in Kerrville at Christmas, you know. Our friends in Vermont know where they should go. My pasture is covered with leaves and pecans. The stores are all playing those old Christmas songs. Let's all go downtown for the lighted parade where Santa rides by with the fireman brigade. A tall tree at the courthouse sparkles so bright, sheltering the holy family each night. Our houses are bright with green and red stars, inflatable reindeer, a mouse in a car, the Grinch, giant ornaments, Winnie the Pooh. The yard is all full, but we are not through. Our children are jolly in long Christmas break, videos, sleepovers, maybe ice skate. They sleep on the floor when their cousins come in, eat cookies and candy like it isn't a sin. On Christmas Eve, all of our churches ring bells, calling the reverend and others as well, remembering our love for Jesus and others, then home to our beds and under the covers, peace on earth and goodwill to all.
Maybe it was snow now, she said. All right, this is a proclamation of the city of Kerrville, whereas the fourth citywide poem search for a poet who could capture the essence and awe of the Christmas in Kerrville began on the 12th of November of this year, whereas the citizens of Kerrville came together and shared their written memories, thoughts, visions, and stories into beautifully written poems, celebrating a Christmas in Kerrville. And of the six submitted poems, three were selected as finalists, and whereas citizens of Kerrville were instrumental in coming together to select their favorite of the three poems that best captures and describes what a Christmas in Kerrville is all about, and whereas sincere gratitude is extended to Katie Caple, who has given her talent to the citizens of Kerrville by capturing the true joy and spirit of a Christmas in Kerrville for this and future generations to enjoy. Now therefore, I, Tony Junior, mayor of Kerrville, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, December 10, 2024, the poem "Christmas in Kerrville" as the official Christmas in Kerrville poem, and encourage all citizens to join me in celebrating the written talents, the writing talents of Katie Caple. Congratulations. Excellent. You also know a few things about birds, don't you?
Yeah, well, I'll be a visitor for them when you get to me for that.
Okay.
Yeah, very well done.
Thanks for creating that. Got me in the spirit.
And now some friends. We run a business that's been around for a long time. You all please join me up there. Why are y'all all here? Does everybody know, these people close books? Go ahead and introduce yourself, just make sure.
I am Green.
Bob Green.
Kim Clarkson.
Austin Clarkson.
Anybody else here with y'all tonight?
No.
Okay, boys. All right, Kim served on city council with us, and in her spare time worked at the family business. And that business turned 100 years old this year. So I want to present this certificate of recognition to your family. We're all proud of you. Thank you. City of Kerrville Certificate of Recognition is hereby presented to Kirk County Abstract and Title Company for its 100 years of extraordinary customer service. Kirk County Abstract and Title Company is a full-service title agency located here in Kerrville, the heart of the beautiful Texas Hill Country, with talented employees who pride themselves on giving the very best customer service in the title industry. Whereas the company offers the most up-to-date technology in order to streamline every step of the real estate closing process, and Kirk County Abstract and Title strives to stand out from the crowd in both service and meticulous attention to detail, ensuring a smooth experience for both buyers and sellers. The Kerrville City Council is proud to present Kirk County Abstract and Title Company with this certificate of recognition for its century of helping meet the real estate needs of the citizens in the Texas Hill Country. And I signed it, and it's dated. And there's one for all, and you, and you. All right, let's get a picture. Before you go, to what do you attribute 100 years of service?
Well, you know, it's the community. I feel like if you have a supportive community, you're gonna do well, and we're thankful to the community for all these years.
And I might add, she's been with the company over 50 years.
Oh, yeah.
I shouldn't say that in public, because I was.
I started when I was a child.
Well, thank you for recognizing us and honoring us. I'm very proud of my, my family for continuing the tradition.
Also, anything to add?
I have the best-in-laws in the world.
And I might, I might say that the city of Kerrville has been very good to us and our family, since we've raised our family and now our grandchildren here. As a former Tybee principal and school superintendent, I, I have to appreciate our mayor, because I watched him run for student council.
Congratulations again. Please.
Bobby, you should have finished up your sentence, which she started when she was 12.
Austin, thank you for doing that.
Oh. Did you write the ad column?
Let me know what you're welcome. Next item on the agenda is a visitor and citizen forum. Kelly, do we have any wanting to speak tonight?
Yes, sir, we have two. George Burdi.
George.
George Burdi, 606 Glen Road, so I'm just here to talk, I talk about Regent and subdivision and the housing in the area, but more particularly about the compliance of that particular agreement we have with them. I don't know if anybody pays, it's a contract that was created about four or five years ago, I guess. We've had three city managers through the extent of it, but the main focus of the contract was for affordability of housing. That was the requirement, and the agreement states that the developer's performance obligations would be to provide houses' sale pricing with the net sales price of the home being affordable to home buyers earning up to 80% area median family income. And then it goes on later to adjust that a little bit, to say that the maximum sales price of a completed home and lot shall be adjusted annually to reflect then-current median income, and TDHCA's, Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs, definition of moderate-income housing, and shall be effective with respect to the contracts, so on. So the key parts about that are the definitions of some things that aren't being complied with. If you look at the sales, there's been, give or take, 70 sales so far. Affordable housing, defined by TDHCA, is housing where the occupant is paying no more than 30% of gross income for gross housing costs, including utility costs. Moderate income is currently being defined by TDHCA as households whose incomes are between 81 and 95% of the median income for the area, as determined by HUD. So the key there is, all these 70 houses that are being sold, the amount of their housing costs, their monthly housing costs or annual housing costs can be no more than 30% of a person making that amount of money. Currently, that means their housing allowance for a year would be 24,000, give or take, per year. 2,000. per year, $2,000 a month. If you go through the sale prices of the homes that have been sold, and you look at not the sale price, but the amount the person borrowed, add the mortgage cost, the property tax they're paying, the homeowner's insurance, and the utility costs, everybody, everybody isn't right. 50 of the 60 that I'm able to actually track are above 30% burden on their housing, which means they aren't meeting the standards set in the contract. So what I'm asking here is for someone to address the compliance of this particular contract and see about getting answers as to how we're going to correct that. And I would start by doing your own reading of the developer's agreement. It's just, it's pretty clear. And it's not saying that the contract's good or bad, it's just, why do we have it if we're not actually abiding by it? Lennar has an option really to remedy it, and it's as simple as this. They're either to sell these houses in these affordability ranges, or they're to buy back the land that we gifted them at the beginning of that. So at some point, it'd be nice to see that being taken care of sooner rather than later before the second contract begins to go. Thank you.
Peggy McKay.
Ms. McKay.
I'm here to give you a yearly report from St. Vincent de Paul.
Good, thank you.
It's notable this year because of the increase in the need within our community. The pantry and the conference offices were open 96 days to offer food and financial assistance. Pantry volunteers provided 404,497 pounds of food to 1,790 households, which were made up of 6,043 people. Financially, St. Vincent de Paul directed a total of $192,151 to help 1,124 neighbors with $2,435 utility bills. This includes administration of K-Pub's Change for Charity program, and that provided $76,217 in funding to help address 973 electric bills. And finally, $53,876 of other assistance was provided for clothing, furniture, appliances, and different needs of the people. And I can tell you that since this summer, the need for food assistance has doubled. And in some cases, it's more than doubled. So the need is out there. The need is also out there for more volunteers. After COVID, we lost volunteers, and this is an all-volunteer agency. 100% of the money that's provided through the thrift shop or donations is given back to the community. And I can tell you, these are some of the most wonderful people in Kerrville. And also, the volunteers, like the ROTC, talked about a family unity or a family unit, and it's like that with the volunteers. So this is a report. This tells you any donations have been well-used, and also that the need is there and increasing all the time. So any volunteers, the door's open.
Thank you. Thank you for your hard work.
And Mayor, we did have one more sign up, and that would be Katie Capel.
Oh, good. Katie.
Well, I'm here with my bird city hat now, and this is, as you know, a coalition of 25 community organizations with participation by the city of Kerrville and Kerr County. And I wanted to let you know that we've been notified that as of January 9th, we will be certified as a bird city, and there will be some statewide publicity about it. And hopefully, this will generate some more birding activity and tourists coming to Kerrville for birding. This year, we have accomplished quite a lot through all these different organizations. And in January, we will be putting up a bird blind in Kerrville Shrinor Park with the help of the Parks and Recreation Department, and they've run a water line so that we can have a water feature, and it will be a very nice and comfortable place to go and observe birds. We have raised enough money for an additional bird blind. We haven't decided where that will be. In addition, in November, we had a community-wide planting event with native plants going in around the courthouse, in front of the youth events center, and along the Veterans Pathway in Flat Rock Park. So we have a lot more planned to do. We are meeting tomorrow to consider what our activities will be in 2025.
Congratulations to you. Thank you.
Stay busy. And that's the end of the citizen speakers.
Thank you. All right, the next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. These items are considered routine and can be approved in one motion unless a council member, staff, or member of the public asks for separate consideration of an item. Does anyone have anything they'd like to pull from the consent agenda?
I do.
Go ahead.
I want to pull 4C, 4D, and 4E, please.
4C, 4D, and 4E.
Yes, sir.
All right, anything else? Anybody else? All right, can I have a motion then on the remaining? Do we don't have a? No, okay. Can I have a motion then on the remaining items?
I'll make a motion that we approve the remaining items on the consent agenda, which will be 4A, 4B, 4F, and 4G.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, so vote, and it passes unanimously.
Mayor, I did want to state that on resolution 48-2024, there has been a correction, excuse me, correction. Early voting begins April 22nd, 2025, as April 21st is a state holiday.
Thank you.
Good to know.
Thank you. All right. Item 4C.
I can cover all three of them.
Please do.
In just one thing. It's on the consent agenda that we're fixing to spend $453,000. What's not stated in what I just pulled it for to make, for clarity purposes, these are budgeted items. So that's the only reason I pulled them, just so we could be transparent with the public, so that they know that we're not fixing to spend the money, that we're, but these are budgeted line items that have been allocated already.
Thank you. Is there a motion then on? Can we do all three at one time, you think? Is there a motion then to approve 4C, 4D, and 4E?
I will make that motion, sir.
Motion made in second. All in favor, so vote, and it's unanimous. Thank you. All right. We have a presentation from the good folks at K-Pub. Mr. Rice, are you going to kick this off?
I'm going to let Amy and K-Pub go ahead and kick this off.
Thank you. You're listed on the agenda, sir. Amy?
All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm happy to report that overall, the K-Pub Power Generation project remains on track with no significant issues or delays. And on November 20th, the K-Pub Board unanimously passed a resolution in support of the project. And I want to commend the K-Pub Board on this resolution. The power generation project that we're pursuing has been difficult, not just because of the size and complexity of the project, but because the board wants to share it with you. But we are still in the confidential competitive matters phase of this project, and so much of their work has been done in executive session. However, this resolution does a great job of describing so much, including the need for the project, why we think the project is the best solution available, the due diligence that's been undertaken, the funding process, and the board's directive to pursue the project. So the resolution is in your packet for reference. Next, I want to report that the Texas Energy Fund due diligence process is progressing and on schedule. We currently have 57 professionals from the Texas Energy Fund, including 38 attorneys reviewing our application. So you can be confident that there are a lot of professionals looking very closely at this project. But tonight, we're here to provide more information about the council's role in the process, specifically authorizing the project financing. Paul Jason is here from Specialized Public Finance. Specialized Public Finance is our financial advisor. Paul has over 18 years of experience in the public finance industry. He's been a financial advisor since 2009 and has completed over 300 bond transactions. So Paul, I'll hand it over to you to give the council some background on our project and a proposed calendar.
Good evening, Mayor, my council and staff. Paul Jason with Specialized Public Finance. My partner's 15 years older than me, so he has a lot more experience than I do. So thanks for that. Colleague Will Smith is here also. He joined our firm recently. He's a former CFO of Electric Utility. He's been very valuable, because we represent a number of electric utilities. Wanted to give the council a quick overview of where we are with the financing. The Texas Energy Fund, as Amy mentioned, that's progressing favorably. What's unique is K-Pub is the only muni electric that got shortlisted out of 72 applicants, I believe. Well, there's 17 that were shortlisted, 72 put in for the applications. This program requires you to finance at least 100 megawatts of new dispatchable generation. It's a low-interest loan program. It's roughly 3%. I believe that is fixed. That's below market rates. And one of the benefits of going through the TEF is that low rate, plus the loan has some flexibility as well. The loan will not fund 100% of the project. They'll fund up to 60% of the project. The other 40% will come from debt that's essentially supported by K-Pub. The project is roughly $145 million. I know Mike is here, Amy, and your board chair to answer any questions about the project. But as far as the Texas Energy Fund, it's a 20-year term. That loan is callable at any time. The open market transaction, it's a tax-exempt transaction. When you look at both those rates, the energy fund at roughly 3%, and the market transaction that's tax-exempt, those two rates combined are roughly 3.75%. The next slide just gives you an overview of the energy fund. The issuer of the debt is actually going to be the Public Facilities Corporation. The bonds will be secured by a purchase-power agreement with K-Pub. That will be looked at as an operating expense, and that will be the pledge. So the credit behind the debt is K-Pub. The terms, like we mentioned, 20-year term, 3% interest rate, and then it's payable starting the third anniversary of the commercial operation of the facility, payable at any time. We're sorting through some of the details. We don't think there'll be any breakage fees, but if K-Pub decides to pay that off early, you do have flexibility. And there's also a standby letter of credit agreement we're working through right now. That's roughly 3% of the project cost, and we're evaluating if it should be provided with cash of K-Pub or actually a bank letter of credit. Performance covenants do exist. This is something that is a requirement. Even if you pay the debt off early, you're required to have your resource generating asset available at least 90% of the time. And I know this has been thoroughly vetted with Sky Global and K-Pub, that that should not be an issue to meet that performance covenant. This is an example of, this is the bond issue. So we're moving on to the bond issue piece. This is some covenants that are going to be required. The main covenant that's required by bond investors is a rate covenant. That's typically a covenant that requires you to maintain your rates at 1.25 annual debt service. Some other utilities have policies above the covenant. For example, Greenville Electric has a policy of 1.5. I believe Bryan is 1.75. So there's some internal covenants as well that you shouldn't be close to that rate covenant. Liquidity covenant, sometime bond issues have liquidity covenants. We're not anticipating that for the K-Pub, the PFC debt, but a lot of electric utilities have internal cash guidelines. Right now, K-Pub has north of 300 days cash on hand, so they're in a very firm liquidity position. Another key covenant is additional bonds test. This is specifically just related to the PFC. They can sell additional debt, but they have to meet certain requirements to sell that debt, and it's typically a coverage metric of 1.25 of current debt and future debt. This is a financing timeline, and what we try to do is combine both the financing of the TEF loan or the Texas Energy loan and an open-market transaction. So what we're looking at is the first formal action from a governing body will be in February, February 19th, for the K-Pub Board, and that will just authorize the issuance of the TEF debt, as well as the contract tax-exempt open-market bonds. The PFC will meet the same day, and we'll also present to the council a resolution authorizing the issuance of those bonds as well. So right now, it's tracking that the documents should be in a form to be before the governing bodies in mid-February. The month of March is going to be occupied with rating agency calls, putting offering documents together, negotiating with TEF, the lawyers that Amy mentioned, getting a loan document that's in a final form for a financial close in April of next year. This is just a financial close. The first draw of the TEF is not expected until probably early part of '26. And then as far as the bond issue is concerned, the month of April, we're going to focus on getting our credit rating with the rating agency, getting an offering document ready to present to investors, and then price our bond issue slated for April 24th. That's the date that the rates will be set and negotiated with investors. And then we'll come back to the board, the council and the board in May with the final pricing results. And then the open-market bond issue transaction is expected to close in May, towards the end of May of 2025. This is just a brief graph of interest rates. What's interesting is the last five years has been pretty unfavorable, but overall, it's still really good rates if you could sell a 20-year transaction for less than 4%. Rates have been lower since 1979 80% of the time. So we're at the red line currently, so it's still a favorable time to borrow debt. So happy to answer any questions.
Does anyone have any questions?
So when, I may have missed it, when would you, when will we be approved, if we were one of, to be approved?
I think we're informally approved right now. We're just sorting through all the details. I think at this point, with the resources that TEF has put into this, it would be unlikely that you would not be approved for that piece.
I'll be true. Thank you.
That was my question too, but, excuse me. She had the same question I did, and I will say this is great for Kerrville. So it's, only consider winning, so to say.
All right, I want to, I thank you for coming. I want to say thank you. Mr. Dozier, my president, presenting tonight. Mike Whitler is also here, as well as the board chair, Larry Howard. Kent McKenny has attended many of the appointments, as well as Dalton Rice. We felt like this was way too big of a decision, an trust to this great head, so I'm glad that they helped me sort through some of the issues. And on a tangential note, Ms. Dozier has just recently received a promotion, so congratulations on that.
Congratulations.
Any comments or questions on this presentation?
I would say that I think K-Pub's done a great job of analyzing and getting help to analyze this complicated situation, and I think they are to be congratulated for all the due diligence that they've done.
Anybody else?
I agree.
The resolution, which was referred to earlier, outlines the steps the board has taken and the steps to try to answer questions that we were anticipating would be asked by the public. So if you have time, do take a look at that resolution and also see why the K-Pub Board has spent so much time together over the last few months. All right, thank you all for being here. All right, ordinances, second reading. Charlie, will you read us in, please?
Yes, sir. Ordinance number 2024-30, second reading. An ordinance submitting chapter 50, fire prevention and protection of the Kerrville Code of Ordinances by adding a new Article III Cost Recovery Program and mitigation rates, which will authorize the city to apply which will authorize the city to apply fees, mitigation rates for the various emergency services provided by the Kerrville Fire Department, providing a severability clause and providing other matters should lead to the subject. This ordinance was unanimously approved on first reading November twelfth, 2024, and there are no citizen speakers signed up.
And we have it before us tonight because there have been changes to the ordinance?
Yes.
Would you mind outlining those for us?
Correct, so I brought it back in. Actually, the good news is I have one less slide than last time, so I'll go through the real briefly on there. Just back on the overview for everyone here. So we're still trying to balance the rising cost of fire apparatus, extrication tools, rescue equipment, and our supplies and personnel. All these calls are high-risk for damaging specialized equipment and replacing the supplies, implementing a fee for service for motor vehicle accidents, and a fee for service to manage hazardous material spills and gas leaks to responsible companies. These fees are considered usual, customary, and reasonable to include services, personnel, supplies, and equipment. And what I came back tonight for to clarify, and it was presented last time, but we had to clarify the ordinance, is that in the original ordinance, page three of four, section fifty dash forty-one mitigation rates, we removed the or mutual aid agreements. And the intent initially was not to have it in there. This is really the intent of this, is that those that pay taxes within the city or within the Kerr County interlocal agreement, under an interlocal agreement, would not receive a fee for service as the authority having jurisdiction in that response. So if a mutual aid county were to come here from Fredericksburg, were to come into Kerrville, they will receive a cost for services. So just some clarification on there, so we just cleaned that up. That was the intent the entire time, so it hasn't changed. We just had to make sure that was clear.
All right, any questions for Chief? Let's certainly entertain a motion for the second reading.
I will make a motion to approve ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash thirty on second reading. Second?
The motion is second, any discussion? All in favor, so vote. Passes unanimously. Thank you, Chief. All right, we have a service agreement. You're up again. Thank you, Chief.
I am, but do not have a PowerPoint presentation on this one, so even less slides. This is the service agreement that will tie in with the ordinance to provide the, it's a third-party company that we will be working with under an RFP, and we're ready to award that contract based on the ordinance approval. Happy to answer any questions y'all may have.
Any questions about the resolution?
I'll make a motion that we authorize the city manager to finalize and execute this service agreement.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, so vote. Passes unanimously. Seven B. It says here truly, but is it you again?
We tag-team on this one, so.
Ms. Behrens, are you up?
I'm up. Everything really that I have goes directly in line with what Chief Maloney has. So we did originally include our entire fee schedule, but we took that out and only gave you the portion that was actually going to be amended because it made it easier. It wasn't that whole document. So I'm happy to answer any questions. Obviously, Chief Maloney's going to be more the expert as far as rates and those kind of things, but we're basically adding what was necessary to be in compliance with this agreement.
Council, have any questions for either person? If not, is there a motion?
I make a motion to reapprove resolution number forty-nine dash twenty twenty-four.
Second?
Second.
It's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, so vote. And it passes unanimously. All right, seven C. Interlokal transportation agreement between the City of Kerrville and the Alamo Area Council of Governments, which I believe is a three ninety-one.
Yes, sir. ACOG is a three ninety-one. So no, we talked about this in the workshop a little bit, but just to kind of recap, this came to us about a year ago, working with Alamo Regional Transit, which is part of ACOG, the Alamo Area Council of Governments, the three ninety-one, and to talk about kind of public transit and what's being done in Kerrville. We do currently a ADR service, which is the bus. We run about fifty-five-hundred-ish, or they run about fifty-five-hundred-ish rides a year. This proposal, we set aside about $200,000 in the budget to expand that public kind of transit system, which would be what they call the pronto-on-demand service. This would add a fleet of wheelchair-accessible vans to the city. We're proposing a time from seven AM to seven PM, Monday through Friday, with ten AM to five PM on Saturday and Sunday, to try to gather as much data as we can on what this would look like. The difference between this service from a public transit side is you have to call twenty-four hours out for the ART bus currently. This would add a pronto app, which ideally is going to be thirty-minute response times within the city limits of Kerrville only. And I'll entertain any questions if y'all have any.
We, for the public who's here, we did have a conversation about this during our workshop. This is a really exciting opportunity not to provide transportation services to those who most need it, and it's not in competition with Kerr Connect.
Yes, sir.
It's in partnership and supplements Kerr Connect.
Absolutely.
Which is doing a great job. And also, we'll supplement the ART bus program, so that summarizes it.
And Sean with the ART is here for any questions.
He made a great presentation. All right, do we have a motion then on seven D? I'm sorry, seven C.
I'll make a motion to approve approval of the transportation agreement with ACOG and ART.
There's second?
Second.
There's motion and second, any discussion? All in favor, so vote, and it passes unanimously. Seven D, interlocal agreement relating to funding and construction of improvements through the Water Resources Preservation Grant Program between the UGRA and the City of Kerrville. Mr. Hornis?
Mayor, members of the council, thank you for taking the time. This is about a bioretention pond at the public safety facility. And Martin was kind enough to put this up here for us. So just a little background, we had a bond issuance a few years ago, and as construction started to get going, those numbers for everything started to get higher and higher and higher, and so we had to make some value engineering decisions. And unfortunately, some of the things got kind of stripped out. And one of the things that we couldn't afford to continue to have into the project was the, some of those low-impact design, kind of green infrastructure pieces. And we had two. One was a bioretention area, and you'll see that right here. So essentially, that green area is a stormwater section. That water runs down to the left. We'll sort of follow that blue path right in there, and then that little pond right there below it is the bioretention area. So that will work as kind of a natural, it'll suck up that stormwater, let it filter through the system, so it doesn't just run all the way through the system. And the second piece was pervious pavers that we were going to try and put into the system. We couldn't afford to put those in. The locations that we had them were also not really public, and so it didn't serve a whole lot of the purposes for UGRA. But Tara Bushnell, executive director for UGRA, is here, and she's been so awesome to work with and helping us get through this because there's a lot of math in this. And Michael's just not really good with the math. So anyway, the grid is an amount not to exceed twenty-nine thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars, and it's a ninety percent portion of our costs. So our costs for that are thirty-two-five, and so it was really hard for us to justify that thirty-two-five in total when we had other kind of operational items for the police chiefs and for Charvey and court. But once we got that number down to thirty-two fifty, thirty-two hundred and fifty dollars, it was a lot easier to incorporate that back in. So Tara had a few words she'd like to say.
Ms. Bushnell?
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Tara Bushnell with upper. I'm really excited for this agreement to come for y'all in front of y'all. Not only, you know, our goals for the Water Resources Preservation Grant Program, when UGRA initiated it, is incentivize these types of practices in building the bonds. And so like Michael mentioned, that bioretention area is going to mitigate the stormwater runoff and reduce it from that creek. About half of that, the area of that front parking lot at the new public safety building. And so that will have an immediate impact on that local watershed and improving water quality, reducing runoff. But then, being just such a publicly visible area, it's going to serve as a demonstration about how these types of practices can be incorporated in building designs, which we hope will serve an example throughout the community. So excited to partner with y'all on this and happy to answer any questions about the agreement.
Thank you. Any questions?
Well, I was looking at the map, and is Clearwater to the west of it?
So it's right on the corner of Rio Monte and Clearwater, Paseo.
Okay.
Where the bioretention is. So it's more on the, it's parallel to Rio Monte. So it's nice and visible at that corner, which was another reason why we thought it was a good option. The permeable pavers were kind of hidden in the back.
Good. That's a good plan.
To the public, and the cost-effectiveness of those is a little bit.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you for your work on this. Michael, thank you for your work. That math stuff was good, thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right, do we have a motion then? Seven D.
Well, I'll make a motion that staff recommends approval of the interlocal agreement between UGRA and the City of Kerrville, and I would agree with that.
There's second?
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, so vote. It passes unanimously. Thank you for your help. All right, seven E. Ms. Behrens?
I had to look at where I was. I have three tonight, so I will be brief. So my first item for you is our banking services agreement. We've been in the process of this since back in September. And so just to give you a timeline, and I won't go through all these steps, but we published our RFP back in September and then worked through that process. We received four proposals by the deadline. After we reviewed those, we set up follow-up calls with each of our proposals to make sure that we were very clear on what they were presenting, ask some questions, and then give them the opportunity to do the same. We had an internal team, and then we also partnered with our investment advising firm, who also, Linda Patterson, and she does a lot of these banking RFPs and agreements. And so she also sat on our team when we evaluated all of these agreements. And so we're seeking approval tonight on our final agreement to authorize the city manager to finalize this banking agreement. Our four proposals that we received were Happy State Bank, Security State Bank and Trust, Wells Fargo Bank, and Texas Regional Bank. I won't, again, go through all of these, but I just wanted to share with you kind of our criteria for evaluation, and these were all outlined within the RFP. We did have a strong emphasis on the bank's ability to meet our overall needs. And so the volume sometimes can present a challenge, and so we do have some follow-up things that we're going to provide to proposers just for feedback, so that we can, they can kind of see why we're recommending the way we're going, so that way they'll know in the future. Again, I'm not going to read all of these. These were in your packet, but I just wanted these outlined, and we will be providing this to all proposers. But we are recommending that we enter into an agreement with Wells Fargo for banking services. They are our current treasury management provider for all of our financial services. So kind of one of the primary reasons, if I had to say you have to pick one, is just consolidation of services, so not using a lot of third parties that had to come together to take care of our services. And then the ability to have automated approval processes so that we have date and timestamp is really important to us. So that way, there wasn't anything email or, you know, phone call approvals, those kind of things. So that was really important to us, so that we have better fraud prevention, and then also just really tracking of what we're doing on the backside for audit, those kind of things. Any questions on that before I go to the next one? Anything specific on either the RFP or kind of our reasons for this recommendation?
Do we need to approve the banking services agreement first?
Yes, well, I'm going to, hold on a minute, I'll go to the, what we're asking for is that you authorize the city manager to finalize and execute this agreement. I do have Kevin Shepherd with me tonight from Wells Fargo, so if there was anything specific that you have for the bank there here as well.
So let's consider seven E. Do we have any questions from Ms. Behrens or others? You hear none, is there a motion?
I would move we authorize the city manager to execute a banking service agreement with Wells Fargo.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion?
Mayor?
Yes.
You do need to add that second part. It's all part and parcel with this item.
The designated officer?
Yes.
No, the designation is Director of Finance. Okay. Okay.
Is there a second to the amended motion?
Second.
Everybody understand what we're doing? All right, any discussion? All in favor, so vote, and it passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Of course, seven F. Mr. Paxton. City's grounded wastewater sanitary sewer sewer line easement on property that owns adjacent to fire station number three on Legion Drive. Mr. Pax?
Thank you, Mayor and council. This is a request by the property owner for an easement on city property. They were looking to develop this property, and the adjacent sewer line is very cost-prohibitive to tie into because of the topography, the drainage south of the parcel and the creek. So working with them, we decided, identified an area that they could go through city property with an easement for a sewer service line. So they will maintain that line. They'll be responsible for the maintenance and installation of that line as a service line. This is just granting them the easement, so that they don't have to spend close to half a million dollars for one sewer connection.
Any comments or questions to Mr. Paxton? I will say that it appears there are some folks here that, in the audience, who are interested in this item, and your children are super well-behaved.
Yes, they are.
Any comments or questions for Mr. Paxton?
Well, a lot of my questions I had answered before this meeting tonight, but, so it was a consideration of under five thirty-four, which I understand why that ran the cost up so much.
Right.
The other question I had was no interference with the city's use of the current, you know, property, which is the fire department.
Correct. So the city owns three properties right there. The fire department, there's a small strip of land that runs from Legion Drive down to the bottom of the creek and actually around where one of the lift stations used to be. And then the UPS property, the city leases to UPS for their operations. So this is actually only on that strip of land, primarily for drainage. There is another forced main sewer line in that, in that property as well. So it will not impact UPS or the fire station.
And I understand it's for swimming? Hey, I mean, I was curious as to, you know, what your business was.
We have a swim school right there, yes. Yes, we operate out of different current pools right now. We're looking to build a, our own pool.
Well, we'd love to hear more about that when the time comes. Or now, I don't know, you know, we don't, I don't know if you were prepared to say very much, but.
I'll just say one thing.
Please come to the mic, state your name and address, please, for the record.
Yes, my name is Chris Coffon, and I'm the owner and operator of C3 Swim. And so C3 Swim consists of two legs. One leg is a swim school. We operate right now out of the Center for Fitness primarily, and then Shriner Pool in the summertime. So we teach swim lessons to over three hundred and probably fifty kids at this point in the area. We've been, we've been a year-round business for five years. My mom started it forty years ago in backyard pools. I took over twelve years ago. So this property, we bought a year and a half ago with the idea in mind to put a pool there to enclose it, to teach lessons out of, so we didn't have to keep borrowing pool space from different pools around. And so, yeah, that's what this is about. We need a pool of our own.
Thank you.
Good luck with everything.
And they had a terribly cute float in the holiday light parade.
Y'all won something too, didn't you?
Oh, way to go.
All right, any other comments or questions? If not, is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to grant the easement for the wastewater line.
There's second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Any additions from my case? No. All in favor, so vote. It passes unanimously. Thank you for what you're doing.
I'm waiting patiently.
Item seven G, Mr. Rice.
Y'all get me twice tonight. It's been a lot of talking this time.
Fire, man.
Yeah, so this is a continuation also from the workshop. I wanted to discuss the Water Resources Strategic Plan. We do have Catherine and Martin here from Concert Engineering. And what we're requesting tonight is how do we communicate our water better? How do we be proactive on the communication of water? How do we brand our water and, you know, get the education information and the material out there so people can digest it and not just be reactive, you know, to kind of what we're getting sometimes? Really try to, you know, dive into the targets and the audiences of what we're trying to do and accomplish, whether that's through social media, through committees, or any number of. number of sources. This does align with the 2050 plan. While it's not a direct council priority from this year's, you know, council work plan, it does address W-10, which is education and water. And I think it does very closely align with, with council's vision of trying to address that. And so I'll entertain any questions. They are here to answer any questions as well.
We answered a lot of them already.
We did answer a lot of questions. How's the show going so far, guys? Are we doing okay? Any question, I mean, any questions from staff or from the engineering firm? If not, I'll certainly entertain a motion.
I would move we approve the city manager to negotiate into a contract with Council Engineers.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion among us? If not, all in favor, so vote. It passes unanimously. Thank you for your time.
Your counsel, thank you.
I look forward to your work product.
Going to need your help, so looking forward to those brochures and things.
Ms. Barron, you're up.
Good evening again. So I'll be brief. Not a whole lot to report as I can only bring you one month in just because of where we are and only having one meeting in December. So I thought I would at least bring you up to speed on what's been happening in October and just give you a couple of notes that I know for sure in November. I knew I was going to do it. That's banking. Okay, so general fund, and I'm only going to give you the major funds today because there's just not a lot of activity. But on the general fund side, remember that when I show you FY '25 budget estimates, basically, we're taking a three to five-year history dependent on the revenue expense line and saying, on average, at this point in the year, we're about X percent spent. And so we use that number just kind of as a guide. So there's nothing concrete about it. It's just using historical data to say, this is where we think we should be, and then this is where we are compared to that estimate. And then, of course, that, you know, in the first month of the year, there's a lot of strange things that can happen. You know, some things happen in October one year that happened in November the next year. So if you look on property tax, when you look at the better or worse than estimate, a little bit behind where we thought we should be. But again, we're in October, and so really not, property tax isn't due yet. We just have a lot of folks that go ahead and pay that. Sales tax was behind where we wanted to be, but better than last year. But I will say also that month-to-month is really not a good indicator of sales tax because November is 8% better than last year. So we're really still using that 12-month average to kind of watch trends and see what's happening as we bring you forecasts moving forward. Service revenues, better than budget. As of October, of course, there's still some moving parts from '24 that could affect some accrual there, so we're watching that. Recreation revenue, better than budget estimate. I think last year at this time, we were behind budget estimate, so we're happy to see that. Keep in mind that we are going to be having major renovations on the golf course and, of course, on the pool. So we've taken those closures into consideration when we did budget for revenue and expenses. On the personnel, you'll see that we're, we've spent more than budget estimate, but it's a timing thing. So workers' comp and our liability were both paid in October this year, but they were paid in November last year. So you'll see that level as we go into November. And those are pretty, those are pretty big expenses. So looking at the, whoops, I skipped water. So looking at water fund, you know, we still maintain stage-three water restrictions as we should, given the conditions that we're in. You know, we redid our water model to reduce our dependency on irrigation as we went into this last budget year. So I'm happy to report that water is right in line with budget estimate. And now, again, it's one month in, so we'll see how that, how that trends as we start looking at consumption over the next few months and then going into sewer averaging. Same story with personnel and services there, higher just because of the workers' comp and liability insurance hitting in October. So you'll see, really get a better idea when I can bring you a report in January that'll be for the first quarter. So we talk about development services and being very difficult to budget. And last year, all year, I said, well, we're behind where we really should be and ended the year behind where we wanted to be. And now I'm going to say, first month of the year, we're ahead of where we estimated to be. So we just don't know. It's heavily dependent, of course, on development. Their expenses are pretty stable. There's, you know, mostly personnel, not a lot outside of that. And so their expenses kind of are what their expenses are, similar to the water fund, but their revenues vary greatly. So we work with their team a lot just to kind of see what projects are coming up and those things, to see if we can somewhat project what's happening. I didn't go into the other funds right now, but I just wanted to make a couple of notes. So you probably noticed kind of our new process that we've been using for our asset replacement, bringing those over $50,000 items to you as a group on consent. The idea was we want to get them ordered and done. Given supply chain issues, of course, we're seeing that being better. We've actually ordered everything on our asset replacement budget with the exception of the two items you approved tonight and some of those that we've already taken delivery of. So kind of happy about that, that we're not seeing maybe 18-month to two-year timeframes like we were just on, you know, standard vehicles and equipment. We have already started working for the '26 budget as far as our asset team. We've already had one meeting. We'll meet again next week and start working on that model first as we start bringing you workshops in the spring. Working on long-range forecasting, so updating our five-year forecast. We actually work out to about 10. We bring you five, but we're updating that right now, just looking at economic trends and those kind of things, and taking budget to actual, comparing those to the last several years, and then trying to predict, project forward as we get ready to start budgeting. Capital projects moving really quickly, so a lot of things happen at Public Safety Facility. If you haven't been by there, a lot of dollars moving out of there, so that, that project is moving along on time. Quality live projects kicking off. So we have a lot of, really a lot of things going on, a lot of water and sewer projects. So hopefully, we'll be able to bring you some more solid numbers on CIP in January as well. So our schedule, just letting you know kind of what's going on. We do have auditors on site. Actually, they're here still right now. So we've been working on that for the, we started really in August doing pre-work, and they're here now doing testing and internal controls and those kind of things. We'll start, of course, working on our asset replacement in December. I think here in about a week, week and a half, we'll submit our final budget book for GFOA award. And then we'll start working on preliminary budget work in January, February. And we'll be having this conversation again.
Over again.
Yep, here we go again. So happy to answer any questions. Again, it's just one month into the year. When we get into the next quarter, I'll be able to bring you some solid numbers after audit so that you can see some strong fiscal year '24 wrap-up numbers.
Thank you. And thank you to your entire team. Any questions? Feedback? All right, thanks again.
And I have one more thing for you guys. This is really quick. Alton told me, make it fast.
An update regarding city of Curville American Rescue Plan Act projects and proposed re-allocation access.
Well, there it is. Okay, I'm like, did I not upload it? That's possible. Okay, so I want to give you an update on our ARPA funding. So as you know, the city received about $5.9 million in ARPA funding in two tranches beginning back in 2021. So this has been going on for a good while. And most of those monies were allocated to a variety of public safety projects. I'm happy to report that those are complete, with the exception of a few purchases that we still have waiting on supplies. So to date, we have purchased or encumbered right at $5.75 million. So I wanted to really just, you know, I guess, thank you for that allocation because it's made a huge difference, especially on the asset side, in what we were able to replace compared to what we would have been able to do without this allocation. So it's been very positive for us. So I wanted to talk a little bit about project savings. So of the $5.89 million, we have about $143,000 left. And that's project savings throughout across the city. But what we'd like to do with it is we have kind of an emergency situation that we need to make a pretty immediate repair to the awning at Central Fire. So we'd like to allocate some of those savings dollars to there. We would like to look at a variety of budgeting softwares to put in place so that we can basically build out the budget as we go. And so as we make a change, that will change for us. It offers some transparency modules. It offers the digital budget book. All the graphs that we're doing on July 31st at 5:00 PM will, will build out for us once we do the build out. So it really is the way most cities are going. I'll be honest and tell you, we've looked at demos over the past three or four years, and I keep saying, it's too much money, it's too much money. But we kind of put a pencil to paper on what we spend putting together that budget book, and it's a lot between the proposed and the final. So I think, yes, there's some soft costs there that we could maybe improve some efficiencies within our department if we were able to have that. Then we allocated $50,000 to park improvements, and we really haven't worked out the details on that yet. We're working with Michael and Ashley to say, you know, of some of our master planning items, what really didn't make the list? What are some high priority needs that we have? And then come back to you, of course, if it's over 50 for approval or any agreements, anything like that. But trying to just hit some, some high spots of some things we couldn't do otherwise. And then the rest was just contingency because we really don't know until we get into the details of some of these projects if it's going to be a little bit off. And then our request would be that if we have any excess, obviously, you can see it won't be very much, that we allow the city manager to allocate those excess dollars. I would suspect it'll be $10,000 or less. But we just wanted to have a little contingency and they're not allocated at all, just in case we needed it. So happy to answer any questions about ARPA. Chief McCall's here, Chief Maloney's here. If you have any public safety project questions, they can certainly answer those if I can't. But what we're asking for is that you just approve the reallocation of those, the remaining dollars that we're saving as we described.
Any questions from Ms. Barron's? There, oh yeah, please.
Was there a, Ms. Barron's, was there a deadline to spend the ARPA funds?
So encumbered. So we have to have them allocated by 12/31 of this year. We kind of accomplished that by council's direction of allocating those funds in previous budget amendments and those kind of things as we brought them to you. But we just wanted to be real clear and keep it super clean, that if we were making any changes, that we did that with your direction. So primarily, it will still go to public safety with the exception of that $80,000, $90,000 there.
Thank you.
The comments?
It's nice to have something left over.
It is nice. It is nice to have a little leftover. And I didn't say, but we have to spend, those dollars have to be out the door by '26. But we do have to have them on the books as far as if someone says, how are you going to spend them? We have to spend them. And we have to have those encumbered by, by '24 and then spent by '26.
There a motion?
I will make the motion to approve the request to reallocate the ARPA funds.
Second. It's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, so vote. It passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we have some board appointments to make. Item 9A. 9A wasn't, I don't believe had a, I don't believe it had an interview team.
I think it was you and I.
I don't know.
Well, I did interview.
Do you have a recommendation for us, ma'am?
I do. I'd like to recommend Judy Eichner to be the chair, appointee to the Terrence Board.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, so vote. It passes unanimously. Thank you. Appointment to the Food Service Advisory Board. That team was Seigerman and Hughes. Ms. Hughes is not here. The Seigerman?
Yes, I would like to recommend that we, we, we appoint Laura Ditmar. She's eligible for reappointment.
Is it Laura or Rebecca? Laura?
Laura is what I have. And I would, we, I have spoken with her on the phone, and I think she's done a great job and she's, you know, qualified to be reappointed, so.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded, or the nomination's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, so vote. It passes unanimously. Appointment to the Library Advisory Board. That was Brenda Hughes and Kent McKinney. Mr. McKinney.
Yes, so we had some well-qualified applicants. I think Brenda and I suggested or nominate that we reappoint Barbara Jensen, Jansen, and Lana Tatch, and Carolyn Andrews as a, as a new member to the board.
Thank you. Is that a motion?
Mr. Motion, please.
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second. Appointment to the Library Advisory Board. Any discussion? All in favor, so vote. And it passes unanimously. Appointments to the Main Street Advisory Board. I believe that was Ms. Seigerman and myself. Ms. Seigerman?
Yes, I'd like to recommend that we appoint Gina Tier to our board. She works for four properties, which is a business owner downtown, and we're always looking to have that representation on the Main Street Board. So I think she'll be a good candidate, a good board member for Main Street.
Second that nomination. Any discussion? All in favor, so vote. And it's unanimous.